Attention all staff, we are about to test the fire alarm system. Will you hear the sounds, please take no action.
Sit down.
Application in the Queen against Morge and Hampshire County Council.
My lords, in this matter, I appear along with my lonely friend Mr Gregory Jones for the would be appellant.
Attention please, attention please, please leave the building immediately. Please leave the building immediately by the nearest exit, do not use the lifts.
I'm sorry about that.
Mr George, it happens every Tuesday morning at nine o'clock, it shows that we're on time. A couple of points before.
Attention all staff, the fire alarm test is now completed. Please take the appropriate action in the event of further activation, thank you.
A couple of points, one is that we have allocated two hours, which I think is quite a generous allocation for an application for permission. But that, we have got to do everything in that, including retire and consider our decision and announce it. So I think if you could aim for about forty minutes maximum for your address, that would be very helpful. The other thing is that although you've made a separate application for interim relief, all it says you want is interim relief. And I haven't found a copy of the draft order of what you're asking for, but maybe you have.
Well, if I can, that could be circulated now, it was with the papers and. There are two copies there and a third is outside, I think, being copied at this very moment.
Thank you.
We simply wanted in the terms in which Lord Justice Ward amended the previous injunction in May.
But Lord Justice Ward sends you back to Lord Justice Keane and Lord Justice Keane sends you back to, back to Mr Justice Sullivan, so I think we do need a Keane copy of what you're after.
And my lords, effectively it's an injunction restraining all works except for certain fairly minor maintenance works, but they are set out in the draft.
Yes.
Sorry, have you just handed up one copy?
There's just been handed up two copies and a third was at this very moment being duplicated. It is somewhere in your lordships papers, but it plainly hasn't got through. Lord, I should just have said that Mr Sasha White is appearing for respondents on all matters save for the interim relief. And on the interim relief issue, Mr James Finlay is appearing. And your lordships well know the background of the matter. The claimant is challenging a planning permission granted by Hampshire County Council to itself on the twenty ninth of July for a point four point seven kilometer busway along a disused railway. Busway means for these purposes no more than a metal two lane road, with of course provision for bus stops and lighting at the bus stops. But that's what we're thinking about, it's a new road to two lanes.
And bicycles?
And it has got a pavement and it has got a cycleway, that is perfectly correct, lord. The plans are in a bundle and I hope your lordships have got a large bundle like this. And I'm going to refer your lordships to a few documents in it. And in this, in this bundle, which there is in tab nineteen, various plans of the scheme. I merely mention that there, I'm not going to take your lordships to them. And Mrs Morge, the claimant, she lives in a property which is immediately adjacent to the busway, at twenty one Witch Lane. And indeed in the plans which are at tab nineteen, there's a plan with a page number one three eight. And she lives at the extreme left hand side of page one three eight of the bundle of the plans at tab nineteen, but I simply mention that to your lordships. And what we say is that County Council rushed through its own scheme without proper regard for the safeguards in two pieces of European Union environmental legislation, namely the habitats directive of nineteen ninety two and the environmental impact directive, which has been amended at various times and the relevant part of which is the nineteen ninety seven amendment, which is in your lordship's bundle and I'll come to in a moment. Lords, of course, there are the three issues, the application for permission to appeal, the question of whether there should be any reference to the European Court at this stage under article two six seven. And of course, your lordships have got a power to make a reference before determining whether to grant permission to appeal. That's in your lordship's practice direction, eleven paragraph eleven point one point three. And then there's the question of interim relief. And I go straight away to deal first with the application for permission to appeal. And lord, the first point to make, your lordships, is to point out that when the Court of Appeal refused permission, they did so expressly with hesitation. And could I ask your lordships to turn to the Court of Appeal's judgment, which isn't in the bundle because we knew your lordships would have that separately. And if your lordships would go to the very end of the judgment of the Court of Appeal, your lordships will see on the final page, there's reasons for decision where Lord Justice Ward says we, I hope your lordships have got the judgment. We recognize that the issues raised on this appeal may be set of importance. We certainly accept they're difficult. We recognize the cogency of the grounds submitted by Mr George in support of his application for mission to appeal. Nonetheless, and with a degree of hesitation, we've concluded that the Justice Supreme Court must decide. So if I may put it this way, they plainly thought that there was something in the grounds of appeal, but felt your lordships should choose your own diet, as is the normal course. But I do draw attention to that phrase, with hesitation, which is in a way slightly surprising because if there was hesitation, one might have thought that this would have been a case which ought to have been the subject of a reference to the European Court. But there it is, that's the starting point. And my lords, there are three grounds on which we say we've got a real prospect of success. And all three raise important issues of public law of general application. If I just identify the three issues. The first is the proper interpretation of disturbance under article twelve one B of the habitats directive. The second is the proper interpretation of article twelve one D, which is deterioration of breeding sites and resting places under the habitats directive. And the third concerns the environmental impact directive and the extent to which a public body in deciding whether a project is likely to have significant effects can simply reach its own judgment regardless of the only expert evidence before it from its own consultants. Now, lord, so far as the first.
It's not regardless, it's contrary to.
Contrary to.
I mean regardless suggests, yes, through it in the dustbin.
No, I'm positive, positively contrary. In circumstances where the consultants had said there will, there would be or would probably be a significant effect, whether Lord Justice Ward is right to say, well, the public body must, the elected members have got a function, they've got to reach their own judgment on the matter. But that's the third point, but it's positively contrary to their own consultant's advice. Lords, so far as the first matter, article twelve one B, as your lordships probably are aware and as is stated in the publicity document, the habitats directive has, I think, never been before either the appellate committee of the House of Lords or the Supreme Court. Your lordships will find it in tab two of the bundle. It's a nineteen ninety two directive, it's been amended, but the amendments don't affect us. And if your lordships would go to the page which has got page seven of forty three at the top in the habitats directive, we are concerned with article twelve.
Well, we've all seen that.
Now, your lordships, your lordships have seen it. Can I just briefly, they say to your lordship, that the scheme is that there is a list of species which are European protected species, which get the protection of article twelve. It's not an absolute protection because if there would be an interference in terms of article twelve, article sixteen provides for what the Europeans call derogations, we call licenses here.
You will bear in mind that we have very carefully read the judgment under appeal and all the skeleton arguments.
Now, my lords, the only evidence before the committee was that of the council's own consultants, that for a period which we say is nine years and that's never been in dispute, this is the two years.
There's an affidavit which slightly.
Now it's query, let me explain how you get to it. It's two years during the construction and it's seven years until there is substantial growth of new habitat.
So it's for nine years and.
So it's a period of up to two, a period up to nine years during which the consultants said that there would be moderate adverse impacts on bats. Now, it doesn't matter for the argument under the habitats directive, but I should just say to your lordships that it's convention in assessment that moderate adverse impacts and severe adverse impacts count as being significant adverse impacts. As I say, in fact, under the habitats directive, we're not concerned with the question, any test of significance.
Can you give a reference to that consultant's report?
The consultant's report, my lord, is in, is tab fifteen. It's called the updated bat survey. And if your lordships go to tab fifteen, the easiest way is for me just to ask your lordship to go to the very last page at eleven point one. In the very last paragraph, it's the very last page. As a relative additional surveys, it is probable there'll be a short term, moderate adverse impact on bats. And we can work back to find out because that is, then it'll be reduced through mitigation and the mitigation doesn't take effect until you've had the growth and that's how you get to the nine years. Now, my lords, it's common ground and there's clear European Court authority that disturbance includes indirect disturbance. So that's common between the parties. And that's the Greek case and I have commissioned against Greece and I needn't take your lordships to that. Now, the Lord Justice Ward and the Court of Appeal adopted a highly restrictive approach to disturbance. An approach which was not merely not argued by the respondent, but was expressly disavowed by the respondent.
And still is.
And still is in paragraph thirty seven of their notice, I'm sorry, in paragraph seventy of their notice of objection.
But they say it doesn't matter either way.
They say it doesn't matter either way, but it is important your lordships look at what has been decided because according to Lord Justice Ward, for there to be disturbance, there has to be something that affects the long term distribution and abundance of the population of the species. And your lordships will see that most clearly in the judgment at paragraphs thirty six, thirty seven, thirty nine, forty five and seventy four. I'm going to take your lordship to it. Now, your lordships will straight away see the consequence for the protection of all European protected species of this, we say, and my opponents say, erroneous interpretation. You've got a Court of Appeal judgment, which means that in future, if anyone wants to bring a prosecution for disturbance within European protected species, because I remind your lordships that it's a criminal offence to disturb, to deliberately disturb a protected species, that's under regulation thirty nine one of the habitat regulations, which is in tab three. Now, consider you are natural England or someone bringing such a prosecution. In accordance with Lord Justice Ward's interpretation, you are going to bring evidence, presumably expert evidence, to prove, not just on a balance of probabilities, but to prove beyond all reasonable doubt, so as to make the tribunal or the jury sure that the population status of the species is at risk as a result of the disturbance.
You mentioned jury, I mean, this can't be an indictable offence.
Well, my lords, these cases, these cases are either way matter, so it could.
It isn't either way then.
I get the learning junior traitor, but let's say, lord, I'm not sure. But the same matter is going to apply in the magistrates. And lord, that's a very striking proposition that one's going to have to prove that. Take an example of some, of some, of some youths who are tormenting some otters or are deliberately flashing lights at some otters or at some of the other. And there are a whole series of these European protected species in England. One might have thought that that was sufficient if there was some evidence that it was causing harm, having an adverse effect on the, on the otters. Under this test, unless you can show that as a result of these actions, the species of otters and the distribution of otters and their conservation status in the long term is threatened, because that's the test of Lord Justice Ward, the prosecution simply has to fail. And my lords, I do put at the very forefront of my arguments that it is absolutely essential that the Court of Appeal's judgment on this issue be reviewed and we would say necessarily overturned. And I'd say both sides are going to argue, would be arguing that it is wrong because otherwise you have got a recent, up to date Court of Appeal authority on the matter. It is with respect slightly strange that council were not asked for any submissions on this matter. And I say, it was, it was common ground that no one was arguing for this. And indeed, at first instance, the judge had expressly recited that Mr Cameron appearing was not arguing that and the Court of Appeal recognized that he wasn't. But certainly I didn't address any arguments to it, but as I say, it is plainly wrong. And my lords, one can see that it is wrong from the Advocate General's opinion in the case of Greece, which is in your lordship's bundle at tab nine.
I'm very reluctant to start looking at authorities within the House of Lords. We never looked at authorities on application for permission.
My lords, all I say is, it's perfectly plain that from his opinion in Greece at paragraphs thirty four, forty three and forty four, that is not the test. But of course, I didn't take the Court of Appeal to those passages because it was not in issue. It also must be wrong for two further reasons. We give nine reasons why it's wrong in our grounds of appeal. But first of all, it flies in the face of the precautionary principle. Now, your lordships will know that the precautionary principle is contained in article one nine one point two of the treaty of the functioning of the European Union, which is in our tab six, but I won't take your lordships to it. It's a basic part of the treaty. And in the Waddensay case, which is in our tab eleven, paragraph forty four, the European Court has said that the habitats directive must be interpreted, that's its phrase, by reference to the precautionary principle. And the precautionary principle here means that you are protecting European protected species from disturbance by a much lower test. You're not waiting to let this one go and that one go and that one go and only interfere at the stage when you say, by golly, the species as a whole's population is now under threat. That cannot be the appropriate test, any more than it was in Greece, where the Greeks said that there were still just as many turtles as there had been ten years ago. There was no evidence that there was any reduction in turtles. And the Advocate General pointed out that that was irrelevant. One was concerned with precaution and protection. Lord, the second absolutely clear reason why it must be wrong is that the commission has given guidance that for there to be disturbance under article twelve one B, there does not have to be a significant adverse impact. There does not have to be, so it's something less than that.
Well, that's just the commission's view.
That was the commission's view. Now, Lord Justice Ward agreed with that. And in his judgment at paragraph thirty three and paragraph thirty five, he said that he accepted that the qualifying level of disturbance did not have to be significant. And that again was agreed between the parties. Now, if your lordships contemplate for a moment, the test which he has applied is plainly one where the disturbance would be significant. If you're actually affecting the population status of the species in the long term and he said that that is the criterion, then that is plainly a significant disturbance. So on the one hand, he said it doesn't have to be significant, the disturbance. On the other hand, he has applied a test, which is plainly a test, which is one which is significant. And of course, we readily accept that significant disturbance is covered by twelve one B, but it is not only very significant disturbance, which is the test which in effect, Lord Justice Ward has applied. But as I say, unfortunately, none of us had the opportunity to put that forward. And the test which we propose is that all that is required is that there be an appreciable interference with the protected species, a certain negative impact, likely to be detrimental, which is more than de minimis. And if your lordships have the questions for reference, has that document reached your lordship?
Yep.
If your lordships would just look at the page two, the second page of that, it's item C, question C, at the top of the second page of that. We say that that is the appropriate test. That is the case very close to the word, the test which the European Commission has given in its guidance, which is in your lordship's bundle at tab twelve and it's at page thirty seven of that document. And it's a readily workable one. And in particular, Lord Mans, and I'm sure the other members of your lordships will be familiar with European Court judgments dealing with what used to be article eighty one and is now article one oh one on agreements which have the effect of restricting trade whereby agreements which have a de minimis effect are left aside. And the test is to only be concerned with those which have an appreciable impact on market conditions. Well, it's the same sort of test, is there an appreciable impact, negative impact on the species? And what we do say is that it cannot be said that the decision would necessarily have been the same if the right test had been applied.
But can I just ask, I mean, assuming that they'd gone through this hoop and they'd come to a different conclusion, they would have gone on to consider whether to grant themselves a license?
Well.
And you have to.
They, they would grant the license. Your lordship has to remember, it's natural England who grant the license. And your lordships remember, and I apologize if I'm telling your lordship something which is very familiar.
That's, that's right, is it? Because under the original regulation, it would have been the Secretary of State.
Lords, there's now, there's new legislation which enables the Secretary of State to enter an agreement with natural England that natural England will deal with the matter. And this came up at first instance and we were shown documents that there is an agreement that natural England has had delegated to it the power to do it.
Thank you.
But lord, the key matter is that they would only be able to grant a license if the test in article sixteen C was satisfied. And your lordships don't like going to authorities, so can I just remind your lordship that that means that in the interests of public health and public safety or for other imperative reasons of overriding public interest, including those of the social or economic nature and beneficial consequences of primary importance for the environment, the license should be granted. Now, that is deliberately a pretty strict test because the European Union members have gone down the line and saying there are certain animals which are going to be given very special protection. It won't be absolute, but it's only if there are imperative reasons that we will allow the interference. So that would be under article sixteen one C. And of course, the matter has never been considered either by the local authority as to whether, given the right test of disturbance, they think that there is an imperative overriding public interest. There is, it's absolutely clear that that's not a matter which was ever considered by Hampshire County Council's consultants because they applied a quite different test as to whether there was going to be a significant impact. Your lordships may want to know, wonder why they did that. That's because there used to be regulations, the two thousand and seven habitats regulations, which used the word significant. But those had gone by the relevant time in two thousand and nine. And so we simply cannot say what would be the position if the proper test was applied and it was held, the matter had to go for a derogation. And what we say, it's quite simple, that matter ought to go back and be considered. If there is the overriding case, then at the end of the day, these, they will get, subject to the EIA point, they, they, they may get their license.
Well, I mean, I don't think that's going to be a luxury available when we come to consider any question of interim relief, is it?
Well.
We're going to have to form some tentative view.
Your lordships get a form of view. And my lords, I don't intend to say anything more on that ground, the second ground.
Can I just ask, maybe we'll deal with it at some point, but what happens if you're not given interim relief? What happens to, but suppose you have an arguable point on what you've just been submitting?
Well, my lords, if I'm not given interim relief, there must be, there is going to be a form of disturbance, for this matter, it's not going to matter whether it's the article twelve one B or else. There's going to be a form of disturbance to the bats as the construction works continue. The bats will not be wholly eliminated because so far as phase one B, which is the southern end of the scheme, they haven't got the money for that. So that bit won't be affected and I don't think, my lord, it's going to be several years before they get the money for that. But lord, so far as phase one A, there is still a substantial amount of foliage and habitat available and that will go.
What happens to the litigation? Do we send it off to the European Court on your case? And quo bono, what happens?
Well, my lords, it would be, my lords, it would be very unsatisfactory for the bats if there wasn't interim relief. I remind your lordships.
I'm asking you to consider the hypothesis, because they're two different things. Supposing there isn't interim relief, does this litigation in practice come to an end or does it go off to Europe? Who has the status to pursue the litigation on behalf of the bats?
Well, my lords, it, it, no, it would not, it would not come to an end. The litigation would not, as it were, simply come to an end because there will still remain an outstanding issue as to whether or not there has been, there has been a breach. If it went to Europe, that would be being decided.
No, I fully understand, there's that outstanding issue and that's the difficult issue which you're suggesting and which I'm postulating would have to go to Europe. It was decided, all right, if Europe say there's no disturbance, that's the end of the case. But supposing they say there's disturbance, is there some remedy available to your plant or to anyone? or to anyone in that situation?
In so far as any bats have been, have either died because they haven't the stamina to fly afar enough, or have relocated and so forth from this area, plainly, those are irremediable matters. And that's the seriousness of this matter, and it's why we're rather like the Lapple Bank case, which your lordships may remember, where interim relief wasn't granted, it went off to Europe, Europe said plainly, this is in breach of the directive, and by that stage, the port had been built and all the birds had gone. My lord, that's the situation.
And I wondered whether there was any remedy against Hampshire County Council for what would have been a breach?
Well, eventually, my lords, you can have a financial remedy, but it doesn't much matter. I mean, no doubt, no doubt, they could get fined, they could be fined, and one would imagine it would be many thousands of pounds by the European Court, and indeed, proceedings could be brought against, I regret to say, it would be against the Supreme Court.
Are you suggesting that the European Court could impose a fine on Hampshire County Council?
Well, what they know, the fine which they would impose would be on the member state, they have no...
It'd be the Commission in the first instance, wouldn't it? There have to be separate proceedings by Europe, by the Commission against UK.
That's right, my lord. As soon as we got into those proceedings, the public body would be, it would be the member state who would take the responsibility, and any fine would be of the member state. And likewise, my clients could bring proceedings under the case which my friend, under the COBLO proceedings, against the courts of this land, which had misconstrued the legislation.
That doesn't sound very likely.
Whether we would succeed...
Bearing in mind, the Court of Appeal has said that one thing...
Whether we would succeed is another. But the key matter is, I think, I think the proper answer to Lord Mans is that it really is critical. If there's anything significant in what I say, then the matter, it really follows, there ought to be an injunction.
No, well, look, the most important thing we have to decide this morning is whether there should be interim relief. And I think, as we, you're well over half an hour already, it might be best to concentrate on that, because I think we must press you with this question. We fully understand that you want interim relief, but we would like you to tell us what will happen to this litigation if you don't get interim relief.
Well, my lord, let me tell you the four grounds why we say there should be interim relief.
You're not going to answer that question?
Well, my lord, I think, I know, my lord, I think this is going, I think this is going to show, your lordship, what will happen if there isn't interim relief, because these go to, the reasons why illustrate what would happen if there isn't interim relief. My lord, the first is that construction of phase one A, that's the works which are likely to start very soon, they've so far been suspended, are going to cause, to lead to large adverse visual effects for a hundred and sixty houses, and moderate adverse ones, that's still significant ones, for two hundred and thirty houses, that's a total of three hundred and ninety houses, lasting for the midterm, that's fifteen years. And your lordship will find that in tab sixteen, at page four dash fifty, four dash one five six, and four point six point three one. Now, that is, therefore, three ninety houses, which are going to have a significant visual impact because of the knocking down of a whole series of trees, and after fifteen years, there may be sufficient mitigation that the large visual impact reduces to merely a minor adverse impact. Now, my lords, to come back to the question which I was asked by Lord Walker, if the injunction isn't granted, those trees are going to come down, and those three hundred and ninety houses are going to be exposed to a significant visual impact.
The question that Lord Mans asked, and which I repeated, was what would happen to the litigation, not what would, what would happen to your client's...
My lords, those would have come down, the litigation, there would still be a relevant point for the litigation as to whether in these circumstances there ought to have been an environmental impact appraisal, as one would have thought was inevitable. If you're going to have three ninety houses having a significant adverse visual impact, it seems most extraordinary that there wasn't an environmental impact appraisal. And, my lords, that matter will still need to be determined, regardless if they have come down. And of course, it will assist so far as phase one B, because there is planning permission for phase one B. But if it is decided that there ought to be an environmental impact appraisal, then Hampshire County Council are going to have to go back, and they're going to have to go back and they're going to have to reconsider the whole matter, because they will not be able to rely on a planning permission, which plainly should not have been relied on. Secondly, the interlocutor relief is necessary because the construction will inevitably have an impact on the bats. The consultants said it was going to be a significant impact. The importance of Dr Holloway's report, which your lordships will find in tab eighteen, is that he went out last week, with the interim injunction proceedings in mind, just to confirm that there still was lots of bats activity in the corridor. And what he looked at was a section, it's quite a short section, of a hundred metres, which is partly in phase one A, and it's partly in phase one B, just to see what the position was, an important area, because it's the very area which is adjacent to a bat roost, which had been discovered at seven eight close, which is some forty, I think it is forty metres away from the busway, and to which bats commute from woodland across the, to the west of the busway, they commute across it to that particular bat roost, and that means them crossing the stub end of phase one A. And he went out on site, and he found not only is that bat roost still flourishing, but he found almost next door to it, another bat roost, which the council, curiously, they come before your lordships with a witness statement from someone who says he's a bat expert, he apparently hasn't been out and found it. Another bat roost near it, again being served by commuting, and that's a bat roost with two species, including one of the species which is particularly under threat, a soprano pipistrelle, two species using it, and he saw fifteen bats emerging from it. So that is an intensive use by bats. And so your lordships have got the situation there, bats are there, bats are under threat. And, my lord, if your lordships don't grant the injunction, then one would hope that some bats do survive, and one would hope that it'll remain a live issue in the litigation when the matter comes back, whether there ought to be, even at that late stage, an injunction, so that phase one B cannot go ahead, which is also going to have an effect on bats. And I should say to your lordship that I think the new bat roost which has been found is just into phase one B, it's just the other side of the line. So, my lords...
I mean, those bats may be able to adjust their commuting routes, we have to...
My lords, your lordship is unfortunately not a European protected species. I mean, I know it's very difficult for everyone to appreciate it, but the decision has been made that there are so, there are some species, and there are only a few, which are so important that they warrant very special protection.
I follow that, of course.
And therefore, my lords, to simply say they can move is not really, is not really an answer to the matter. And it happens that within Europe, England happens to have, particularly in the south, quite a number of bats, and all bat species are protected, but that doesn't mean that they are the less important or the less worthy of protection. Now, it used to be the line to say, well, don't we get too concerned about birds and fauna and so forth? But that course is no longer open to us now. The Habitat Directive is there, it affords them the protection. So, my lords...
I mean, I begin to get the feeling that if you don't get interim relief, you still say, well, we must go ahead, A, because we've got to correct the Court of Appeal's erroneous exposition of the effect of twelve one B, not least for the purposes of future criminal prosecutions, and B, because phase one B isn't in the offing, and therefore, this could, the result of the European adventure could well be to affect that.
That is right. And of course, there is going to be very severe visual impact from phase one B, and it's highly relevant that that be subject to environmental appraisal. It's an oddity of Lord Justice Ward's judgement that at the very end, when it comes to visual impact, he doesn't give the various figures, but it is very serious, and it's serious in both phase one A, where it's only the fifteen years, in phase one B, it's even more serious, because the expert evidence is that there will be a long-term visual impact on a very large number of properties, and that is the matter which is why it is so very extraordinary that there was not an environmental impact appraisal.
The summary you've given us in tab sixteen actually is a very, it's a condensed summary, it's rather difficult to follow. It seems to skip from year one to year fifteen, but it seems to be the appendix, A four and B, of which are really relevant, which I don't think we have doing.
Well, no, your lordships don't, but, my lords, so far as, so far as this particular point is, if I could just take your lordships to paragraph six point, to paragraph...
Four point six point three one is the one.
Four point six point three one, that deals with one A.
It deals with year one.
The one sixty, but actually, my lords, that's, I, that's when the trees come down, and then that is all mentioned, and then when you get to the end of four point six three two, it says after fifteen years, it's predicted that they would experience light adverse. So it takes up to fifteen years, and after fifteen years, it reduces to slight adverse.
Well, the previous sentence suggests it's a gradual process.
I'm sure, my lords, and I'm not going to quibble, of course, it'll depend on which trees are growing faster than others. My lords, so far as phase one B, it's the next page, four one five seven, and it's the last sentence of four point six point three five, one sees in year fifteen, it's predicted the majority of the residential properties would experience moderate adverse. So that's still significant effects. And, my lords, there are a great number of such properties, there's a hundred and the seventy, so it's a hundred and seventy, are going to be having long-term significant impact. And, lords, it's a simple matter for your lordships, but when a developer, and the developer here is Hampshire County Council, we say that when they act in breach of the habitats directive and in breach of the environmental impact appraisal, or may have acted in breach of those two directives, then the clear duty on this court, under what is, used to be Article ten, but is now, as your lordships will know, is now Article four of the Treaty on the Functioning of the, on the Treaty of European Union, and that's in our tab eight, is to ensure that European law is upheld. And, lords, that is the clear test, that is why in the famous Barclay case on environmental impact appraisal, it was held that there was in effect no discretion to refuse relief because the decision might have been different. It is your lordship's duty to take any appropriate measure to ensure fulfilment of the obligations arising under the treaties. And for this purpose, it is your lordships, considering this application for appeal and this injunction, who are in the position of the member state with that particular duty.
Which is the Barclay case?
Well, my lords, the Barclay case, the best summary of the Barclay case, if you were to go to tab one, which was some agreed points, propositions of law, and go to page sixteen, your lordship at paragraph forty-seven there will find the key passage from Lord Bingham's speech in Barclay, which was an EIA case, and Lord Hoffman's speech in Barclay. In fairness, I should say that those were in the context where a breach had been found. I don't want to take a, take a bad point, but your lordships will see, page sixteen...
This is the banks of the Thames.
Your lordships will see the key passage.
It's the banks of the Thames, this one. This is the Thames one.
Yes, Fulham Football Club, Fulham Football Club, and emphasising the obligation of national courts to ensure that community rights are fully and effectively enforced. And, lords, what we do say is that when your lordship looks at the two witness statements which have come in from Hampshire County Council, frankly, they're really rather extraordinary documents. Much of them is devoted to consideration of the overall merits of the matter, rather than the injunction. And very extraordinarily, so far as Mr Sams is concerned, he quotes certain passages from the environmental document, but he doesn't even refer, he doesn't even mention the passages which deal with the severe visual impact that there would be for the medium term from the destruction of the trees in phase one A. That is simply left out of account. The most extraordinary matter is that they are unable to indicate that they have made any formal approach to the government, to the relevant department, saying, this is our problem, can we have an extension of the time for the money? There's not a single indication that they've made that approach, they don't put in any document showing that any approach they've made, or say that such an approach has been made. What they say is, oh, well, we mightn't get an extension, and the money spent might be clawed back from our ratepayers. My lords, there's no basis for that, and your lordships only got to go back to elementary Wensbury principles. How could the government, in Wensbury terms, refuse to grant them an extension of the period if the reason why they haven't been able to complete is because of a court injunction? It would be completely Wensbury unreasonable for the government not to allow them a further period as and when the litigation had been resolved.
Well, the government might put on a rather different basis. They might say, well, there's a huge question mark over any project like this anyway these days, and this is, I'm terribly sorry, the final straw.
Well, my lord, in which case, of course, they may at this very moment say, you can't have any more millions for this project, I mean, if come the spending round...
Well, in that case, then we're wasting our time.
Now, the important matter is that the trees are protected till September the first. There's a planning condition which says there can't be any demolition of trees during the summer and up to September the first, because in the bird breeding season. Birds aren't European protected species, but there's a planning condition. What's going to become, and therefore, the matter is frozen at present. Most of the damaging works which have taken place took place between, in November and December last year, between the judgment at first instance, when his honour judge bidder declined to grant an interim injunction, and the moment it was reappeared.
Mr George, I'm very sorry to interrupt you, but I did ask you at the beginning of this hearing to try and limit your submissions to forty minutes, so far you've been going over fifty.
Those are my submissions.
Well, I really must ask you to move towards the end of them.
Not only move, my lords, those are the submissions that I'm giving to your lordship.
Thank you very much.
My lords, I will try and be about ten minutes, does that fit in with your intended timescale? Because I want to give Mr Finley appropriate time to deal with the interim point. My lords, just to clarify the nature of representation, Hampshire have decided, in my submission correctly, that I represent them as the local planning authority, and Mr Finley as the developer, as a quirk of statutory powers, Hampshire find themselves as both in this matter.
Yeah, well, we don't usually hear two counsel on these applications, but if you can have ten minutes, then Mr Finley can have ten minutes.
Thank you very much, my lord. Can I start off and just say, I mean, as you can see from Mr George's submissions, my lords, it will be my submission that actually there's only one real point of difficulty in this matter, and that is the Article twelve one B point. So if I can spend my time on that, the majority of my time, I mean... So if I can spend my time on that, the majority of my time, I mean, my lords, my submission is simple, because I ask you, in a sense, to put yourselves to the substantive hearing. If you grant leave in this matter, I would submit you will give yourselves quite a difficult task. Because, simply put, the only, as Mr George readily accepts, the only guidance...
That's not usually regarded as a good reason for refusing permission.
Well, can I develop it, my lord? Because the fact is, is you've all, I'm sure, sought to seek a bit of help on what disturbance means in twelve one B. And the fact is that all you can look at is the guidance. So what you will be entrusting to yourselves is what we've done in the Court of Appeal and the High Court, and spend a large, probably two or three days going through every line of the guidance and trying to glean...
We won't. If it's that difficult, it may get sent straight to Europe. And even if it does involve us in time writing a judgment, it may have to go to Europe. That's life.
Yes, absolutely. But my lord, I suppose the simple point is that what I would say is that the decision of Lord Justice Ward, which I know you're very familiar with, I think it's slightly more sophisticated than my learned friend seeks to...
But you're not defending it. You don't say it's right.
I don't say it's right, my lord, absolutely, because it would be totally...
What is the answer, then, to the point about how it's obviously going to inhibit future prosecutions?
Well, because the point is, I think if you look at Lord Justice Ward, what he actually says clearly, and he says it on three separate occasions, is this is clearly a matter for a case-by-case determination, as it says in the guidance. Yes, he says it must impact on population level, absolutely. But he makes it also very clear throughout that the problem that he has faced is the fact, as he says, I'll give you the references, if I may, where he deals with this. First of all, at paragraph twenty-seven of the judgment, he clearly says, in relation to this, at the final sentence of his judgment, he says in terms, the question will have to be considered on a case-by-case basis.
Well, I know, but it better be considered on the correct legal footing, hadn't it?
Oh, absolutely, my lord.
Which you aren't defending.
No, well...
I mean, every prosecution, they're going to have to look at the impact on the overall population, are they?
Well, that will be one of the factors. But I also make the point strongly...
It shouldn't be, should it?
Well, I think the question, I mean, the point is, within the guidance, the terms of the guidance, one can clearly see, in a sense, I mean, Lord Justice Ward clearly interpreted the guidance in that manner.
Well, what does it mean? The species in which area? The whole of the UK, Hampshire, Glasgow?
I think one would have to look at the specific area to make a judgment on the effects, like in this case that the county council did. I think this is exactly the point. One has to take a relatively subjective approach in the circumstances of the case faced by the decision-maker. In this case, Hampshire looked particularly at the effects of the bats and what the consequence would be. And I think the point is, I mean, my lords, what you seem to have a concern about, which I utterly understand, is making a judgment about the effect of the species. But I would submit that is inevitable in the consequences of twelve one B. It will always involve some form of judgment being made on the specific facts of the case. And yes, Lord Justice Ward clearly said one will need to look at the effect at the population level. But also, he clearly acknowledges within the terms of the guidance, as the guidance says, the guidance says expressly this has to be looked at, at a case-by-case basis. And can I just give you that express reference in tab twelve, my lords? When you will see at paragraph thirty-nine on page eighteen of the guidance, it said in the final sentence...
Forty-nine, is it?
Sorry, paragraph thirty-nine, my lord.
That's not page...
Sorry, it's page thirty-eight, paragraph thirty-nine, I apologize.
What page?
Page thirty-eight.
I see.
And you see there's, in the middle of the page, there's a summary. But on paragraph thirty-nine, the final sentence says, once again, it has to be stressed that the case-by-case approach means that the competent authorities will have to reflect carefully on the level of disturbance to be considered harmful, take into account the specific characteristics of the species concerned and the situation as explained above. And in my submission, that is absolutely what the right approach, what the guide says. And again, if I may go back to my submissions, my lords, exactly what Mr Lord Justice Ward says. Because also, if you go to paragraph thirty-five of his judgment, he says in the final sentence, when he's expressly considering this matter and looking at Mr George's submissions, it is a matter of fact and degree in each case. Now, we also have the final reference, which I think is relevant, and that is in paragraph thirty-nine of his judgment. This is the key in my submission. This comes at the end, when he considers this matter. In my judgment, whether the disturbance will have a certain negative impact, which is likely to be detrimental, must be judged in the light of and having regard to the effect of the disturbance on the conservation nature of the species, i.e. how the disturbance affects the long-term distribution abundance of the population of bats. So in my submission, my lords, I do think that what Lord Justice Ward is clearly saying, in a sense, he's trying to avoid being too definitive. He does clearly at the top of that page say the detrimental impact will be to affect the conservation status of the species. But in my submission, any reading overall of what he says requires, clearly endorses, a judgment to be made in the circumstances of the case. Now, what my submission would be, my lords, in this matter, if you decide to grant leave, you will be faced, Mr George and Mr Cameron will both put you under, you'll be required, in a sense, to give a statement of law as to what twelve one B actually means. And in a sense, that is not what the guidance requires. The guidance seeks a case-by-case basis and a judgment specifically on the facts. And in my submission, that is what Lord Justice Ward has sought to do in paragraph thirty-seven, thirty-eight and twenty-seven, which I made reference to. So those are my submissions in relation to that. Can I just deal with the other two points, my lords, in relation to twelve one D and the EIA? In relation to twelve one D, my lord, I'll deal with this very quickly. In my submission, the judgment of the Court of Appeal was absolutely right. I don't believe it's an arguable case of general significance, its interpretation. In relation to the EIA, I think there's a very simple point on this matter, and that is basically what Mr George has consistently sought to do is seek a revisiting of the merits. And I think Lord Justice Ward got this absolutely right in relation to EIA's. There are two fundamental points on EIA's. The grounds of challenge are that someone in Mr George's position had to satisfy a court that the decision taken not to seek an EIA was perverse. These matters, as you can imagine, have been trawled over both in the High Court and the Court of Appeal at great length. And in both occasions, the decision-makers, the judges, were satisfied that on the facts, it was open to the council to reach the judgments it reached as to whether an EIA was required. And can I say, my lords, critically to the EIA litigation is that the judgment is placed in the hands of the decision-maker. There is a discretion at all Schedule two development, which this is, is considered to be discretionary as whether an EIA is required or not. My lords, my last point, if I may deal with, is the reference to the ECJ. And I do think there is an important point about this. And again, could I ask you to take up the draft questions for reference? And my lords, I would just say, I would just ask you to note the first two lines of that draft questions. The wording of these questions has been agreed by council for both parties, although the primary case for both parties is that no reference is necessary. I think that is important. Mr George, as far as I understand it, is not submitting a reference is necessary. He takes the view as we do, that no reference is necessary in this particular matter. So obviously, I heavily rely on that, what I perceive to be...
Yes, well, that is, of course, a situation that we're fairly used to.
Yes.
And both sides will bear in mind that although you've agreed the questions, it is the court that refers the questions, and the court would have the final word on what the form of any questions would be.
Absolutely, my lord, absolutely. The sole point I was seeking to make, it is noteworthy that the applicant does not seek to ask you to submit that a reference should be made by the court today. Thank you very much, my lord.
Point three of the question, is that really a question of European law?
Well, you've certainly got a point there, my lord.
I'm moderately surprised that you agreed that one. It might be thought to be a ton of it, tendentious, but anyway, there it is. You've agreed it. Subject to any further thoughts that the court has?
Yes, my lord. I mean, I, yes, I mean, I suppose that was agreed in the context of if you are minded to make a reference, and that might be considered necessary, because it does form such a fundamental part of the applicant's case, that if an expert consultants have concluded there would be significant adverse in certain elements, then in almost a sense, that requires an EIA to be provided. Clearly, you've seen the submissions in our skeleton and in the Court of Appeal, that we don't take that, we don't accept that proposition.
The directive is tab two, isn't it?
Yes, my lord.
So the question is...
Are you concerned with the directive in relation to the habitats or the EIA?
The EIA one.
That, I believe, is at four.
It's tab four, thank you.
Yes, my lord.
Just wanted to see who is responsible for making the decision under Article four two A. Yes. It just says the member state shall determine through a case-by-case examination whether the project should be made to an assessment.
Yes, and I think that has been taken into the next document, which is the regulations, which seek to implement the directive into English law.
And which is the relevant regulation?
Well, the relevant regulation is principally free, Regulation three, three two on page... On page seven of the regulations.
Unless they have first taken the environment.
Yes.
They shall state they've done so. So formally, they did the right thing, but the question is whether you read into that some European prescription into very general language.
Exactly, exactly, my lord. And of course, we say that you don't. I mean, we would say that the broadest discretion is given to the decision-maker in domestic law to decide within the terms of the regulations as to whether an EIA is required or not. And you'll see, just for your example, my lord, if you go to Schedule three of the regulations, which are at the very back, on page sixty-four... Yes, sorry, it might just help, my lord. You'll see it's Schedule three. It makes reference to selection criteria for screening Schedule two development, Regulation four five. What Regulation four five expressly says is where LPA or the Secretary of State has to decide under these regulations whether Schedule two development is EIA development, the authorities Secretary of State should take into account making that decision. The selection criteria is set out in Schedule three. And as you'll see, my lord, in Schedule three, the criteria is pretty broad, in the sense it's more headings of what matters need to be considered, rather than any prescriptive identification of thresholds or targets, et cetera. So I would say, I would submit, my lords, that it's fundamental to making that decision that very wide discretion is given to the LPA to decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr Finley?
Well, I start with the proposition that the application for the removal of the search for two by the Court of Appeal, who are very familiar with that, albeit this is not an application for execution, will also draw to Article seven, suggest that any in-hog exception circumstances that the Court of Grant stay. I understand, obviously, except this as an application for interim relief. But, my lord, at this stage of the process, in our submission, it would, your lordships should hire similar care. My lord, in terms of the two matters that my learned friend, Mr George, has put forward, visual impact and bats, I'll deal with visual impact very briefly indeed. My lord, it's important to bear in mind, as your lordships may have seen from the photographs in Mr Sam's exhibit six, that a significant extent of clearance work has in fact been undertaken. Indeed, some one hundred and sixty trees have been removed. And what is perhaps most striking about the opponents of this, Mr Endy, is that he is being unable to ascertain any significant visual impact, save where the bridge removal works have taken place. One can see in the photographs, particularly on page, photographs three and four, and page fifty-three.
Sorry, page fifty-three?
It's Mr Sam's...
Yes. Statement, or statement, yeah.
Statement. And page fifty-three gives an indication of there's a...
Yes.
Of extensive works. And so, my lord, the learned friend diverted to the conclusions, whether it's seven or nine years, and that helpfully highlights the point, in terms of certainly visual matters and indeed in terms of bats, which are come on to, a substantial amount of work of vegetation clearance has already taken place. And so in terms of visual impact, the significant amount of the visual impact, one would have thought might have been noticeable, but Mr Endy doesn't notice it. And then if one turns to PJ S ten, the same witness statement, one has the full extract from the detailed environmental assessment dealing with visual impact. And you're importantly, you can see the conclusions, which aren't in your document, which the appellate has produced.
Can you tell us which page it was on?
It's eighty-three.
Eighty-three, my apologies. Well, the important point is, it is that it's the construction or operational phase which is going to have the worst impact. And if the interim injunction is continued, such adverse impacts as there are will continue because, in effect, in terms of the construction phase, construction phase, standing back briefly, will involve removal of the vegetation. And the only construction, physical construction works will be the road itself, which won't have a significant visual impact, bus shelters and noise screens. And it's the screening of the noise screens by vegetation, which is going to take a time. But, my lord, in our submission, the, much of the construction impact work, the removal of the trees, would have taken place. I think there's some hundred trees, elbow bushes, still to be removed around some of the junctions primarily. But a major amount of that work has been undertaken, as your lordships can see from the photographs, a major amount of the vegetation has been removed.
How many buses a day in each direction?
My lord, it's about thirty buses an hour maximum between seven o'clock in the morning and six o'clock in the evening.
That's going, but counting both directions?
Yes, as I understand it. And before that timing, it's eight buses an hour. So that may be relevant to the problem with bats, but when bats are most likely to be active, which is in the summer months, not winter months, the buses are going to be reduced timetable prior to seven in the morning and after eight in the evening. So, my lord, in our submission, there's certainly nothing in the visual impact point that should cause this court to, even if it was a precious matter in terms of balance and convenience, to find that there was serious harm. When put against the plight of Hampshire County Council as developer, they're in a cleft stick in part. They've had to proceed with this project in order to take advantage of the SIF funding, as it's set out in Mr Sam's statement. They would have significant financial liabilities if the project was stalled at this stage. But more important, my lord, the wider public would not receive the benefit of the bus route. And that is set out in Mr Sam's Exhibit two, which begins at page twenty of the bundle. But, my lord, pages twenty-five to thirty-one sets out the problems and issues that the bus route is seeking to stall. Basically, gospel is at the end of a single-lane road, the A thirty-two, which is crowded and due to become excessively crowded and congested. And the bus lane should help, as Mr Sam's pointed out in his witness statement, to reduce the noise impacts and dwells along the A thirty-two and to improve the air quality. So there are wider public benefits to the environment via this speed and any event. And, my lord, I won't take you to those in detail unless your lordship wishes me to do so. But that brings me on to the point that my learned friend, Mr George, raised, about whether a licence would be granted, given his submissions in respect of... in his, um, his submissions in respect of, of, of Regulation sixteen C. Lord, as Lord Justice Ward said in his judgment, um, he considers that, uh...
Your lordship references. He said in effect that if, if the Court of Appeal was wrong, that, that a licence was likely to be granted.
Overwhelmingly likely, my lord. And, uh, and Mr. Mason has confirmed that, that's the second statement provided by the opponent. And, my lord, I can see why, because there are significant public benefits, both in terms of accessibility, but also in terms of the environment that is, are proposed by the scheme. That's why SIV two funding to the tune of twenty million pounds was granted. And, and, and secondly, if one puts in the balance the, the adverse impact, one may argue about the significance or otherwise, uh, you can have term generally of the impact, but when one is looking at, um, the impact on bats in particular, one is very far from the way my friend put it, that bats wouldn't be wholly eliminated. There may be some impact on the bat population, but the impact is going to be, in our submission, insignificant. My lord, so, my lord, I, I, I've dealt briefly with the detriment to the council, but it is set out fully in Mr. Sam's statement. And, my lord, as far as my friend's point that we haven't sought to extend, um, the time of SIV two funding, your lordship will see that he indicates there's been extensive dialogue with the Homes Community Agency, uh, who have been kept up to date, and that the Homes Community Agency are meeting with the department to discuss flexibility for the end-of-year restrictions. But as, uh, Lord Brown pointed out, as Mr. Sam also pointed out, in the current climate of funding of road, uh, improvements or transport improvements, there can be absolutely no certainty at all that there would be any extension, let alone that the project itself might not come under some form of threat. Lord, Hampshire are keen to get on with this while the money is available. Lord, can I then come to bats? Lord, your lordship should have the statement that Mr. Mason deals with bats. Lord, there are two issues primarily with bats advanced by my friend. Um, the first is where the bat, I can take, uh, the, the, the bat roofs that are found, not on-site but off-site, but close to the site. Mr. Mason deals with the ones that, that he was aware of in paragraph seven, which is page four of his statement. My friend, Mr. George, said that the second one, found by, uh, the expert who carried out the most recent survey, that only affects Phase one B. And I should make it clear to your lordships that the, the interim relief really only concerns Phase one A. Phase one B is not going to be built in the, in the short-term, medium-term. And, Lord, if an injunction was to be made in respect of Phase one B, the council wouldn't exist there. But it frankly is not necessary. They don't have the funding.
Yeah, but this extraordinary long, uh, Exhibit one shows that the, the cutoff point between Phase one A and Phase one B is just about down by, uh, Oake Dean Wood and Savernock Close and, and that base down there.
And, Lord, what, what Mr. Mason's done in his witness statement is to address the importance of that paragraph seven, um, and whether the, um, what would be the effect on, on the bats commuting across from Savernock Close to Oake Dean Wood. And his evidence is that the effect would be minimal. He says that roughly, just below halfway down in paragraph seven on page four of his statement. And, Lord, that's because the, 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 it will only impinge on Oake Dean Wood to a limited extent. And as my friend quite properly accepted, the second, um, bat roost wouldn't be affected by works in Phase one A. So one, in terms of disturbance to flight paths, main disturbance to flight path, one's looking at, at six bats in Savernock Close, uh, whose disturbance Mr. Mason considers would be minimal.
And looking at that very long exhibit and comparing it to Mr. Mason's exhibit, it in fact appears that the bat path would be across the right-hand grade-in spur, rather than...
My lord, the...
Uh, because the, the bats are in the house next to the green, um, field or playing field. They're in the corner of that bottom house nearest to the track. And then the bat spur seems to go down southwest, just across the grade-in bus spur. What's that used for? Why do buses need to have that? Can't they go round the corner?
Yes, the, the buses will come off the bus route and turn, if one's coming along...
Yes, they go right round?
Or turn left round the corner.
Yes, so why, why do they need the spur?
Because Phase, Phase one B isn't going to exist, is it?
Phase one B is not going to exist, so the spur, that's where the buses will access the bus lane at that point.
Yes, but I, I, now, I understand the spur running back on itself. What I mean is the spur to the right along in the direction of Phase one B, which ends in a, 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 a straight, there's a grade-in, grade-in bit.
Yes, my lord, I see the point your lordship makes.
That's, that's the bit which the bus, which the bat route crosses.
Can I take brief instructions on that, my lord, if that is actually... It would, that, the spur is simply enabling works for Phase one B. It's not an essential part of Phase one A.
I see. So, but nonetheless, it's taken place, I suppose. But it won't, there won't be buses on it, which is the important.
It's one thing to say that one has to alter one's route to go a completely different direction, but if the bats were concerned about activity at that particular point, there is a significant, to get to Oake Dean Wood, the alteration or variation in their commuter route would not be significant.
But OAK Dino seems...
Any, any area where buses were going to be, um, active. And it's the activity of the buses that is the, of the primary function.
Could you tell me, has there been any discussion at any stage about undertaking in damages, or does that never get mentioned these days in, in this sort of case?
Well, there has been now discussion about undertaking damages, but given that Mr. Moore is on legal aid, the, the prospect of an undertaking is, is unrealistic.
In, in, indeed, but I mean, that, that, that is, in, in, in considering the balance of convenience, or as it's better put, the, the risk of ultimate injustice to one side or the other, the, the absence of an, an undertaking in damages is a, a, a significant point, I suppose.
Absolutely, my lord. And it's a point I was going to touch on finally, but it comes back to it and it chimes in with the point of the significant financial risk if there was a significant financial damage, the council would suffer if an interim injunction was continued. That, those losses would be irrecoverable. And, and there's, and lesser, my friend suggests there would be an undertaking in damages, I can't believe there will be. There, there is going to be no undertaking, and it's on that basis that the application is made to your lordships.
Is there anything in the AHUS Convention about that?
Well, if, if there is, I'm sure we'll hear from Mr. George in, in his brief reply.
I don't have the AHUS Convention.
Well, it's been put into a European, um, regulation, I think.
Absolutely. Well, it's come into the EIA directive, the AHUS Convention.
The directive.
Primarily, uh, ensuring that, yes, my lord, from that point of view, that there should be no, no restriction on legal proceedings, um, effectively due to one's...
So that, that would cover undertaking in damages as, as well as costs?
Yes, it's Article ten A of the, um, of the directive.
Right.
Lord, as far as commuting is, uh, that's concerned, my lord, I reiterate what I've said earlier about the amount of vegetation that has been, um, removed already. And the, um, point that, and emphasize the point that Mr. Mason makes in his paragraph six, that call a halt to the works now could indeed be counterproductive. And one of the problems with commuting routes, and it can be exemplified by the bridge works, is that one has a gap in the vegetation, uh, across which a bat has to pass, uh, if they're going to commute to their forage. And that, those gaps already in part exist on-site, and it, it would be part of the mitigation works to close those gaps up. And again, one can see that from the photographs. One can contrast the photographs of the current bridge works at, um, page fifty-three, uh, where one can see significant areas of clear vegetation. And then, um, uh, compare those with the, um, perhaps no doubt, um, bellic, um, photo montages at page fifty-six, one can see that the, um, the extent of vegetation clearance would be, um, the mitigation works are designed to bring vegetation as close as possible both to the cross the junctions and between the sides of the busway. And, and, Lord, in our submission, to, to stop the project now, um, would cause great harm both to Hampshire as developer financially for the reasons set out in Mr. Sam's statement, great harm to the public, because they wouldn't get the benefit they'd like to get, uh, for very little benefit. And that in terms of the balance, uh, it is far from a case of a bat species being wholly eliminated, coming back to the word, my friend. Um, the, the position is as set out in Mr. Mason's statement, that, uh, the effect on bat populations is unlikely to be, um, to affect the, there's unlikely to be any effect on bat populations. And, and to remind your lordships that in the updated bat survey, it was the view of the, um, authors of that survey, that the effect on bats would not be significant. And they say that in their closing words on that survey.
That reference was...
Uh, Lord, that is in, um, uh, document fifteen. My friend read you the first sentence of the conclusions at eleven, but the last sentence is successful mitigation, the long-term impact, the works is anticipated to be slight adverse, and no significant impact on bats are anticipated. Whether one views it in terms of the environment or in broader terms, in our submission, balance convenience falls fairly and squarely in favor of the, against an interim injunction, allowing Phase one A at least to continue. Unless I can help you...
Thank you, Mr. George.
Very briefly, first of all, can I apologize? Lord Brown was entirely right. The offense under Regulation thirty-nine eleven is only travel sampling. You were entirely right. Uh, my lord, can I turn first of all to the question of undertaking in damages? Lord, this was raised on the papers when we first applied for an injunction, and what was then put in was the famous case of Jumbo Holdings, Lord Denning, in the Court of Appeal, uh, that a legally aided person should not be required to give an undertaking in damages. Uh, my lords, we also at that stage put in the decision of the Court of, of the Court of Appeal, sorry, the Court of our first instance, in an EIA case, Environment Impact Case of Hubbleston, in which it was held pursuant to the doctrine of, I think, the doctrine of effectiveness in European law, uh, and undertaking in damages should not be required when a party was seeking to enforce European law through interim relief. And, Lord, so far as the AHUS Convention is concerned, there are at the present time, in fact, the possibility of infraction proceedings against the government, that is, the European Commission, has issued a letter to the United Kingdom complaining about the UK's requirement in certain cases for undertakings in cases where there is a breach of European environmental law relying on the AHUS Convention, whose very purpose is not only to have maximum public discussion of these schemes, but also that no one should be impeded for lack of funds from raising the issue of breaches. So my short submission is that it is entirely irrelevant, the question, to the question as to whether your lordships do or do not grant interim relief. The fact that my client is not in a position to give an undertaking in...
And, and you, you say that applies when there is an arguable breach of community law, uh, uh, as well as when there's a, a manifest breach, does it?
That was the case, that was the case, that was the position in Hubbleston.
It was in Hubbleston.
Which eventually went on to the Court of Appeal. Eventually, it was found that there was a breach, but at the time when the issue arose, that was before there was the, there was the decision, and therefore all that could be claimed, all there was was the claimant saying there was a breach.
I mean, I, I follow the argument, but I doubt you would go so far as to say that, I mean, if it was perfectly obvious that the effect of an injunction would be to cost fifty million pounds in contractual forfeiture, that that would be an irrelevant consideration? Or would you actually go that far?
Yes, my lord, I would, because I come back to, I come back to Laffell Bank. That's precisely what, 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 the situation there. There was a Poport development, and at that stage, their lordships were inclined to think that the matter shouldn't be held up while a matter went, 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 went to Europe, because it was so important. But what I do, I, I, this is one of those cases where it's not that just big developments, it's easier to refuse an injunction than smaller developments. Um, my lords, so it's, it's a straight point. The, the, the fact that a, a poor person is bringing the proceedings and is not able to give, uh, an undertaking in damages is, is irrelevant. The question is, have they got a possible point? Lord, they plainly have got a point, because your lordship was taken in tab twelve to page thirty-eight. But can I just remind your lordship of the previous page, which sets the context for the following discussion? At tab twelve, page thirty-seven, paragraph thirty-eight, which deals with the Europeans' conditioned view, it says, "While disturbance under Article six-two," which is in our article must be significant, "this is not the case under Article twelve-one." This doesn't exclude some room for maneuver in determining what constitutes disturbance. It seems logical that for disturbance of protected species to occur, a certain negative impact likely to be detrimental must be involved. And the next paragraphs are dealing with the two extremes. Plainly, it is involved where you're going to have effects on the population. On the other hand, uh, when you get, uh, when you get, uh, minor cases, it, it will be, uh, which are trivial cases, it won't apply. And it is something which is more than de minimis, something which is, uh, appreciable.
It, it seems very curious, actually, that Article six, which deals with special areas of conservation, uh, it, it's only significant disturbances which are prescribed, whereas elsewhere, um, the protected species are, you say, protected against insignificant disturbance?
Well, my lords, in Article twelve, the, the interesting matter there is, when the British, the United Kingdom first made the, uh, habitat regulations, the word significant was included. And it's in the nineteen ninety-seven, the, the two thousand and seven regulations, there were then infraction proceedings, letters written by the Commission saying the word significant should not appear in Article twelve-one B. That was what then led to the two thousand and nine regulations, which have omitted the word significant.
Maybe the Commission was wrong. But anyway, that's not a point we can deal with now.
Now is common ground between us. You don't have to have any significant disturbance. And what we say is that, on those findings of the consultants, that there will be the significant disturbance to the bats, so the significant impact until, um, what we say is the period of the nine years, and on this, it doesn't matter whether it's seven or nine years, once plainly into the territory of disturbance. And, uh, unfortunate as it may be for Hampshire County Council, if only they had addressed the matter in the right way, the position might be different. Instead of which, they have never expressly addressed Article twelve-one B. And now, with respect to, say, Lord Justice Ward, has plainly, uh, set the test too high. Mr. White tries to say, well, you can read it differently, but the more you read it, you find that what he's saying is the key thing is that, is there going to be long-term damaging effects on the species as a whole. That is not the test, and that must be set right. Lord, last matter, so far as the question of the trees, I do simply ask your lordships to, uh, remember the evidence of, uh, Mr. Endine, which is in tab seventeen. He particularly went to the places where it was said that there was going to be the severe visual impact, and he has examined them, and he has expressed the view that they are still protected at the present time. They will not be so protected when the further works take place. And, uh, that is why, uh, to be said. Lords, so far as the final, the last... Lords, so far as the final, the last, very last point, can I take your lordships to the reference questions and just make two brief submissions? If your lordships were refusing leave at this stage, then in my submission, it would become appropriate for your, and necessary for your lordships to consider whether there ought to be a reference. If your lordship is granting me permission, the matter as to whether the matter go to Europe will remain an open matter, and the Supreme Court, when it is eventually considering the matter, will be able to reach a view as to whether it can decide the matter itself, or whether it will, or whether. If your lordships are going to refuse leave, then I would invite your lordships to use the power, which your lordships do have, which is expressed in the relevant practice direction, which is to grant a reference without granting permission to appeal. The very last point is to...
So I'm completely lost, sorry, how does this work? You grant, you grant a reference, but no, but not leave, so what happens then? Where does the reference go back to?
Well, lords, presumably at that stage, one would, one would renew the application, but my lords, it, it...
When you referred to it earlier.
I think, I think the situation is that your lordship wouldn't be refusing leave, your lordships in those circumstances would presumably, I think I've put it wrongly, you would be adjourned.
Yes, that, that makes sense.
That's right. It's 11.1.3 of PD 11, the court may make, may order a reference before determining whether. So, as I say, if your lordship grants permission, then the matter is going to remain an outstanding issue which can be pursued. If on the hand, your lordship are not minded to grant permission, then your lordship will be bound to consider whether there should be a reference, and if your lord decides that a reference is inappropriate, you're under an obligation to give short reasons for that matter. Very last matter, can I just...
Just before we go on, in Mr Endeen's statement, which are the bits which you say are particularly significant?
Well, my lords, he has, he has gone to all the viewpoints where in the environmental statement, it said there was going to be a significant impact from the construction and things, and what he has found is that the relevant trees and area, the trees etc, are still, are still there. Because what I didn't want to come to your lordship and be told, well, all the trees which screened the houses have already been knocked down, therefore there's no impact. That's why Mr Endeen went out with the maps. That's why we sent a batman out, just to make sure that there were still the bats, because your lordships want to be concerned with real matters. Lords, finally, can I just come to the last question for reference, for possible reference, and which is ground three of the appeal, and just to emphasise the importance of the precautionary principle in the whole area of environmental impact appraisal. The recital to the relevant directive, which is our tab four, specifically refers to the precautionary principle, and the aim of environmental appraisal is that where there is not a probability, but a risk of significant environmental effects, then there should be the full appraisal, in order not least, that you can see if there are better and more extensive remedial measures that can be applied. Now, in circumstances that the consultants had found, in some cases that there would be significant environmental effects, in others that there probably would, lords, it is, in my submission, straight irrational for members to have concluded that the scheme was not likely to have effect. Now, the way in which Lord Justice Ward deals with it is paragraph 82.
Mr George, this is a reply, and your, your opponent at this point spent about one sentence on, on the EI.
It's Lord Justice Ward's end. My lords, that again, that's all I can say.
Thank you, thank you very much. We will retire and consider this matter. On the Article 12.1B point, the court grants permission to appeal and does not decide at this stage that there should be an immediate reference to the Court of Justice. We envisage that, that the matter should be heard by a five justice court with a one day estimate, and that court will decide whether or not to make a reference to the Court of Justice. On the Article 12.1D point and the environmental impact assessment point, we refuse leave to appeal, and we do not propose to make any reference to the Court of Justice. And the court further decides that it will not grant any interim relief in this matter. And short written reasons for all those decisions will be given to the parties as soon as possible.
My lords, could I ask that your lordships order expedition of the hearing in view of your lordships' decision not to grant the interim injunction?
Well, I, I think that it, it seems to us that expedition is somewhat less pressing, as we have refused interim relief, than it would be if we'd granted it. I still see that it is desirable, that it should be heard as soon as possible. I know that our programme for next term is already extremely full. I will express the view in the presence of the registrar, that if a one day hearing can be squeezed in at next term, that that would be desirable, but we're not formally going to order expedition.
My lords, I'm grateful. And my lords, could I ask for an assessment of the, of my legally aided costs? I think I simply need an order that may be assessed.
Well, since you've got leave to appeal, I'm not sure that, that an assessment of the costs at this stage...
I do in respect of the injunction which has been, which has been refused. I think it will respect of that element, otherwise the costs of the, of the other matter will go forward as part, as part of the costs of the appeal. I'm not sure whether the injunction costs will, it's simply a...
Well, if, if you need one, Mr George, I'll, I'll make it.
I'm grateful.
And we're very grateful to council for their, their very helpful submissions on, on this difficult and important case.
Before your lordships...
Yes.
Lord, as far as Hampshire's developers involved in this case is concerned, that is now at an end. In order, of Hampshire's developer, I would ask for our cost of resisting the interim relief application. We are only here, or I am only here, in order to resist the interim relief. And given the timescales of the case, it's considered inappropriate that I remain involved, as I've been involved with those, and that the separate representation continued.
Can, can you resist that, Mr George?
Well, lords, I think what, though, the, in the first place, there isn't a strict division between the two functions. It happens, you've heard the two councils, but my lords, if your lordship were to be making any order, it would obviously be in the ordinary form of a, of a legal aid, of the legal aid order, which is, there is particular wording which your lordship will, will know, and which those advise, and which those in the court office will know, which has the... Lordship will know, and which those in the Court Office will know, which has the effect that the order can't be a force without the necessary assessment. If the order were to be in those terms, I don't think I could resist it.
I think that's all you're going to get, isn't it?
My Lords, my Lords, absolutely, but the recovery is primarily against the legal aid fund rather than against this more. My Lords, could I ask what you consider two further matters? One relates to costs generally, and that is to direct that it was appropriate for two councils to appear for Hampshire today. Secondly, to direct that, given the timescales, that it was appropriate that leading council appeared for Hampshire to resist the interim relief application. Ordinarily, certainly on permission to appeal, the Court's action is that junior councils feel it is irrecoverable. But I haven't been here to deal with that, I've been here primarily to deal with the interim relief. So, my Lords, given the shortness of the timescales, and that I've been involved in the hearings before, Lord Justice Ward is to interim relief, which is on the paper, and Lord Justice Key, which is in the next court. So, my Lords, the objection is that the expedition continue to this court on the same basis. It's not for the Royal Department of Justice, I have a point to say.
Well, I don't think we're totally persuaded, are we? The leading council, one leading council.
I'm afraid we are not persuaded that the luxury of appearing by two councils on this application is something that the legal aid fund should stand, Mr Finlay, I'm afraid.
There we go. Thank you very much.